There he is.
Yeah.
Boy, you're all.
Okay.
Yeah. Pam in a panic. Did I forget him? Did I get him anyway?
Everybody ready?
Ready for this.
Okay. As many of you all know that she's... Linda's been our liaison for the past ten years for Channel 7 and 98. And we'd like to take this time and opportunity to show our appreciation for her and for the years she's done for us and her leadership role, and also her communications with the Board of Aldermen as well as the community. So I'm going to read this little plaque that we're going to present to her. And it's to Linda Broomfield, in appreciation for your time, support, valuable assistance in promoting the station's gold and services to the Board of Aldermen and our community for the past ten years. Your leadership will be missed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I've enjoyed working with everybody. I'm going to miss everybody on Channel 798, but I'll be back sometime.
You better. We're going to hold you to that.
I will. I just need a little break. Thank you so much. I appreciate it so much. Thank you. Thank you.
You stay elected.
Okay. Here we go. Please. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, please stand for graduations.
Congratulations. United States of America. And to the Republic. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, yeah?
Mayor Grimminger.
Here.
Alderman Couch.
Here.
Alderwoman Zerwig.
Here.
Alderman John Stupi.
Here.
Alderman Jokers.
Here.
Alderman Donnie Stupi.
Here.
Alderman Openfus. Alderman Ross.
Here.
Alderwoman Broomfield.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Approval of the agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? And certification of the election results?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay. This time we will swear in the new board members. If you would, uh, like to step up here, Pam will swear all three of you at the same time, right?
About four.
Four. Oh, I'm sorry. Four. John, forgot.
Really? To raise your right hand and reach it out to me.
I.
Do solemnly swear that I possess all the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of alderman of the city of St. Genevieve, Missouri, that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Missouri, the provisions of all laws of the state of Missouri affecting cities of the fourth class and the ordinances of the city of St. Genevieve, Missouri, and that I would faithfully demean myself in the office of alderman of the city of St. Genevieve, Missouri, for which I was appointed the eighth day of April 2014. Congratulations.
Before you take your seats, okay? At this time, uh, I would s... I would like to thank Shawna and Linda and Carl's not here tonight for all of the years that you've put in. It's, uh, we always didn't always see the... Always didn't always get along, but, uh, it was been... It's been a lot of fun and, uh, appreciate your support. And, uh, I think we got a lot of things done. And, um, again, good luck and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now you can get out of your seats.
And the chairs might still be around, right? Okay. I guess we will do roll call again.
Mayor Grimminger.
Here.
Alderwoman Caldwell. Alderman Couch.
Here.
Alderman John Stupi.
Here.
Alderman Jokers.
Here.
Alderman Donnie Stupi.
Here.
Alderman Hook.
Here.
Alderman Prince.
Here.
Alderman Ross.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you very much. And, uh, welcome, you, uh, new members. Sure, we will have a good time and, uh, hopefully get some good things done. Um, I guess right now we'll go into Martin's report.
Okay. Um, we continue to meet with the engineer on the hiking and biking trail, the downtown hiking and biking trail. Um, and there should now be preparing a contract for your consideration now that we've defined the scope of work that they're going to provide on that, uh, that project. The, um, it's pretty much limited to inspection services and materials analysis. Basically, it's a sidewalk, so it's not a highly technical project. But the, uh, the Department of Transportation requires that we employ an engineer to oversee it. And so that... And it's part of the grant, so that's what we're doing. I attended a historic preservation and tax credit workshop, because there've been some recent changes and legislative acts to curtail that resource. And our downtown revitalization group is... Has renewed vigor and has been meeting regularly. And I think we can anticipate, uh, some, some things happening as a result of their efforts. So, um, it's kind of a get up to speed on what's happening at the state level so that we could make sure we took avai... Took advantage of whatever resources are available to us. Uh, I informed the Corps of Engineers of your decision on the, um, you had the alternative for the final report. And they informed me, uh, by email that they were, were doing that. Started work on that. I mentioned to you before that we've... There's this prioritizing process for MoDOT projects that's been ongoing. It's kind of the next level occurred at the Transportation Advisory Council meeting in Perryville yesterday. And, um, it's all in anticipation of a potential, uh, referendum or a legislative act. Nobody's exactly sure how it's going to come out to have a sales... Fuel tax increase to fund roads. But the proposal is that before it goes to the voters, all projects, eligible projects, will be identified and put in order of priority so everybody will know what they're getting and what they're voting for. The, um... I had this item on the agenda on my report just for discussion purposes. The city attorney and it's been discussing about the kind of having an update on legislative affairs, things that he studies and has knowledge of and some things that may have changed over time, procedures. And we thought with the election of new officers, that would be a good workshop session for, for us. And so I'm basically just asking you when you'd like to schedule that. Uh, we can do it before our next meeting and it won't take more than an hour. You know, I, I go to a conference every year of municipal attorneys and they always offer a, uh, a session on a Saturday... Well, one, one morning for new city attorneys. I go to every one of them because the questions and the discussion about what's it like in your city, uh, is very interesting. So what I thought might be useful for aldermen that have been around a while or new aldermen would be a, a short presentation. I know meetings are boring and I know that, that making people sit down for more than three or four hours is, is a lot. But if we could do maybe a couple hours on a Saturday morning, if you would allow me to select some topics dealing with how do you, how do you pass an ordinance? And what are the rules of procedure? And just whip through some things that are unique. You've been on lots of boards, a lot of you have. But there's something unique about being an alderman of a fourth-class city. There's certain limitations of what you can do. And we've never done that in all the time that I've been, uh, city attorney. We've never, or I've never been, uh... I, I've never requested an opportunity to give you all some of what I consider to be some bullet points that you should be looking at. Now, I's not to say you shouldn't read the code book, but I... If you'll allow me to select two or three topics, I, I promise that you won't be bored. And we can be in and out of it in a couple of hours. But, uh, it would allow you possibly in a more effective way to even communicate with me if you say, "I got a question. You said something about this and so..." Be happy to do it. Uh, Martin and I and the mayor think that it might be useful. But I want to open it to all aldermen and any other city personnel that might just want to sit in on it. And I'll try to make it as useful and, uh... I wouldn't say entertaining, but useful and provocative as we can. And maybe it'll help things out. Maybe we can get off to a fresh start on some things. Martin will be contacting you. Uh, and I, I would suggest a Saturday morning. Yes? Can we do it in the evenings? Saturdays don't work for me.
Saturdays are difficult for me.
That... We can do it in the evening. But I'm saying, Mr. Couch is proud of saying that no good meeting lasts more than an hour. This is going to need to take at least a couple of hours. But I'll break it into three or four pieces and, uh, hopefully make it informative to you. And I'll make myself available. Martin and the mayor will also. Okay?
You want to set a date?
Now? And it's... We're all here.
Can we do it in like two sessions? Came in an hour prior to...
We could. Whatever works for you. This is brand new. We're inventing it. It's never been done in twenty-something years, so might as well be flexible. So you'd rather do the, do it the hour before our meeting? As a, like a work session? And do it over at least two meetings or maybe even more?
I mean, that's what I...
That works good for me.
That works good.
Okay. Right. So our next meeting is the 24th. Is that enough time? Yes. So, uh, we'll, we'll plan a work session for the 24th at, uh, at six o'clock for legislative... Not what you would call it. Legal issues. Now, I won't be talking about budget. I, uh, I won't be talking about probably planning and zoning. Uh, I'll be talking about your function and your responsibilities.
Which includes some of the land use stuff. And, uh, finally, something came up that's not on my report. Um, Teddy was kind of part of this. But a citizen noted that the, um, Rosier parking for the school is... The parking lot that they used to use behind the Rosier building is concordant to all for construction purposes. And that, uh... We have restricted parking along Jefferson. And while I'm not asking you to vote on this tonight because the, their, the contractor is considering ways that he might be able to open up parking now that all the heavy equipment's come in and gone and after he gets his major deliveries, at least for part of that parking lot. But the idea that was roached before we talked to him today, Teddy actually talked to him, was, uh, to go ahead and allow parking on both sides of Jefferson at least for the next forty-five days or so. So, until schools out. And then, of course, it'll be restored after, after the construction's complete. Anybody have any strong feelings on that one way or the other? Yes, sir?
Can you use the parking lot down there to storage sheds? One block down?
I don't think that belongs to the school.
Nobody can? They talk to somebody and use it?
Yeah, I'm not sure.
I had kind of the same discussion with Eric the other day. Let... Before we get his comments on.
Uh, I, too, have had some conversations with some parents about that that were concerned about, about the parking situation. The, the issue that we have on Jefferson is, is the residents, at least a certain resident that lives down there is not comfortable with being able to back out of his driveway and traverse with, with the cars parked there in excess of the two hours. I did talk to, when the issue first came up, talked to Mr. Bosler about the old funeral, uh, home parking lot. And he was certainly in agreement of letting the kids park there, getting some type of waiver from the school, you know, against any liability that, that, you know, for damage that happens on the parking lot. You know, but so far, nobody's opted for that. I guess it's, it's too far a walk for them. But, um, for whatever it's worth, I, I know that we... And I guess if it's, if it's no longer an enforceable ordinance, then it wouldn't be an issue. But I know that there are some concerns from people that live on Jefferson as far, as, as far as the parking is concerned on there. I can certainly talk to Donzies about the, about the storage sheds. And Corley Field. Yeah. All right. That's probably farther than Bosler's parking lot. But, you know, we're, we're throwing options out there and we're certainly trying to be reasonable.
Well, we, we leased that, so it's... The Corley Fields would be ours to make that decision if they... If that's close enough, certainly.
For Valley School kids.
I'm sorry?
For the Valley School kids.
Yes.
We kept to use KC parking lot to the lower end. It's not too far to walk.
Um, there are several options, uh, there. It's just a matter of, of getting the kids to use it. You know, we've, we've tried, and this has come up, it seems like the last at least three, four years, it seems like there's always some issue with that parking lot that, that hinders them from being able to park there and then they're parking on Jefferson Street. And every year, it's an issue with Jefferson Street. And, uh, and, you know, it's probably a valid complaint on the residents' part. But, you know, we're certainly trying to be reasonable and trying to give everybody the opportunity to find some appropriate parking that's not going to cause any traffic issues or, or going to generate any complaints from the, from the homeowners there.
Chief, uh, you know, I was approached by this and I walked over to Jefferson and, uh, you know, kind of looked at it and a lot of the places are painted yellow. And that was the concern that, you know, the kids didn't own a parking in the old spots.
Yeah.
Which is marked. And I wasn't really sure of why, why some of the areas were marked yellow.
Well, because, because on the north side of Jefferson, it's no parking at all. On the south side of Jefferson, it's, it's, it's a restricted park and there's two-hour parking. Basically, the entire block of Jefferson, but especially there between Fourth and Fifth. So they're... They, they allow parking on the south side of Jefferson. And it's painted yellow because there's no parking on, on the north side. And I certainly wouldn't be in favor of allowing parking on both sides of the road. I don't think it's, it's a white enough road special.
It'd be getting very narrowed.
Yeah.
I think it'd be too dangerous. And I talked to Jim Don... Don the constructionist doing the work over there. He was saying they needed that parking area because they were bringing in a lot of material and large trucks and, uh, as far as maneuvering around.
Yeah.
But he said by Monday, they, he would have a pretty good idea
Yeah.
of what they could do and they might be able to open up some of that parking lot for...
And again, we tried, we tried to nip this in the bud before it was an issue, talking to the school and trying to be proactive. But, you know, I, I mean, essentially, we, we can enforce the parking restrictions, you know, but we don't, don't necessarily want to unless it causes a substantial issue. But again, if, if they're not going to take the suggestions and park in areas that they're not supposed to park, you know, at some point in time, we will likely be forced to do that. But hopefully, we've, we've been getting the work out and I know there's been some concerned parents that have called and I've talked to them, probably the same ones that, that you guys have. So we're, we're working with it. And like you said, hopefully, the parking lot will be open pretty soon. But we'll just work with it until, until then.
Buck, when we went to school at Valley, there was about four kids that had a car, wasn't it?
Yeah. And that's, that's the, the consistent theme with this that the, the times have changed and they can't walk two blocks. You know, whereas some people lived in the road or subdivision, the north end of town and walked school. But there again, I mean, I don't have any control over that. But, but, uh... Maybe they need to do away with the recess and use their own parking lot there, too. Again, that's outside of my control.
They're parking a lot of cars over in the desert right now. I mean, I don't know who's parking them, but half, half the desert has cars in it.
That's above my pay grade. Anything else?
I think that kindergartners would like to do without recess.
I don't think the teachers would like recess.
Okay. Any questions for Mrs. Tullman? Any, uh, staff reports? Okay. Committee reports? All right. We'll go to the minutes of the March 27th meeting.
Move to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And minutes of the April 1st meeting? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Old business, Bill number 3970, second reading.
An ordinance approving the amendment of the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission Transportation Enhancement Fund Supplemental Agreement dated February 14th, 2013.
You know, may I say something?
Sure.
I don't want to sound like an idiot, okay? I haven't been here. What is this about?
Yeah. The, um...
3970.
The... We got a grant for the trail from Parkwood to Progress Park. Okay. But in the process of dealing with property owners and regulatory agencies, it took us a while to get to the point where the Corps of Engineers told us that we could do it without this elaborate permitting process. And the Church agreed to negotiate in good faith for the acquisition of the right of it. Because of that delay, the schedule we turned in with our grant was pushed back. And so this is just amending the schedule so that we have sufficient time now under the grant to get the work done.
All right. Thank you.
Roll call?
Alderwoman Caldwell.
Yes.
Alderman Couch.
Yes.
Alderman John Stupi.
Yeah.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Donnie Stupi.
Yes.
Alderman Hook.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Ross.
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's. Bill number 3970 now becomes ordinance 3910.
Okay. Thank you. Bill number 3971, second reading.
An ordinance approving supplemental agreement number one to the original engineering services contract with Hurst Rochay Engineers Incorporated dated November 20th, 2013 for design and construction inspection of Project STP 9900061 hiking biking trail, Parkwood Drive to Progress Parkway.
This is the same thing. It's just adjusting the contract period to match the grant schedule. Which one were we going with? One, two, or three? What was decided on that? Combination. Which one, me three? The curve, the linear one coming off of Parkwood and then straightening it out when it gets up towards Progress Park.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call?
Alderman Ross.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Hook.
Yes.
Alderman Donnie Stupi.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman John Stupi.
Yes.
Alderman Couch.
Yes.
Alderwoman Caldwell.
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's. Bill number 3971 now becomes ordinance 3911.
Okay. Thank you. Bill number 3972, second reading.
An ordinance approving a budget amendment to the city of St. Genevieve fiscal year 2014 budget related to the band fund number 25.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call?
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman John Stupi.
Yes.
Alderman Couch.
Yes.
Alderwoman Caldwell.
Yes.
Alderman Ross.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Hook?
Yes.
Alderman Donnie Stupi?
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's. Bill number 3972 now becomes ordinance 3912.
Okay, thank you. Bill number 3973, second reading.
An ordinance approving a budget amendment to the City of St. Genevieve Fiscal Year 2014 Budget relating to the General Fund Number 10.
Move through second.
Roll call.
Alderman Hook?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Ross?
Yes.
Alderman Donnie Stupi?
Yes.
Alderwoman Codwell?
Yes.
Alderman Couch?
Yes.
Alderman John Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's. Bill number 3973 now becomes ordinance 3913.
Okay, thank you. Bill number 3974, second reading.
An ordinance approving a budget amendment to the City of St. Genevieve Fiscal Year 2014 Budget relating to the General Fund Number 10 and the Transportation Fund Number 21.
Move approved second.
Okay, roll call.
Alderman Couch?
Yes.
Alderman John Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Ross?
Yes.
Alderman Hook?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Donnie Stupi?
Yes.
Alderwoman Codwell?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's. Bill number 3974 now becomes ordinance 3914.
Their new business, just to let you know, the next meeting, we will elect a board president and also assign committee responsibilities as far as liaisons go. If anybody is interested in a particular representing, like I mean, we've got planning, zoning landmarks, park board, general 798, the band, we usually have a representation with them as far as the grants go. So I will get a list out, Pam will get a list out to you in the next week or so, if you'd like to respond to her, the ones that you're interested in, try to accommodate you as much as we can and not duplicate you as much as we can, so.
Statute only allows us to have one alderman on planning and zoning, so not only do we have, you can still be liaison, but Alderman Prince can't still be, and then we gotta, we gotta re.
We have to.
Bring it in alignment with the.
We did have two though.
Yeah, pardon?
We did have two.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we gotta fix that.
Well, I knew we can have two. We can't have three, I know that.
Okay.
And also, if any of you or anybody that might be listening or reading the paper, we certainly have openings on the park board and also on planning and zoning landmarks. But we're gonna read, or landmark's gonna be, when we talk about that in the next meeting ourselves, so. But we do have openings on planning and zoning in the park board, I know for sure, if anybody's interested. Okay, any public comments, anyone? No? Okay. Okay, we'll go to other business. We have a street closure request from the 2015 Project Graduation to have a grand jam band fundraiser in the area known as the Island of Flags on Merchant Street, Saturday, June 21st.
I'm passing out a letter from a citizen who addresses some issues relative to this request.
I don't know, you asked here.
Martin, are you gonna be able to get one of those maybe?
Pardon?
Are we gonna be able to maybe get a copy of that too?
Sure.
Hi, I'm Sharon Hasty. Kelly Sokowski and I are here on behalf of Project Graduation 2015. We've got a number of fundraisers and if anyone's not familiar, Project Graduation is a community project. It's nothing associated directly with the school. We have a number of different fundraisers of which one we're bringing to each night. I noticed on the notes that were presented, it has time from 3:00 to 6:00. Actually, that is incorrect. It should be 3:00 to 5:00 because of church. What we want to do is we've got a sound system that will come in during the day and then we'll have a band that night. As far as the street closures and the location, we had it designed, actually, we're here for Dina Kreitler. She, so you may ask me questions that I won't be able to answer, but I'll have to do some homework on. She's kinda the steer head for all of this. Yeah, this one's hers. We all have our own projects, but she was, she's not here due to the death of her great father. So we're kinda trying to pick up pieces here. I know her plan was she'd be able to use the electric from the chamber office and have the band there on the side lot. I think there obviously is some, I don't know what that letter says, I don't know what's going on with people. Yeah, is that about our location? Okay. So if someone can kind of enlighten me, I'm sure maybe one of you know what this is.
Well, I spoke to Ms. Tole about this and so I can tell you what her concerns are.
Absolutely, thank you.
They're, they're very well expressed in this letter. She's part of the gardeners, community volunteer gardeners who take care of the kind of mini gardens that we have and in particular, she takes care of the one there by the Island of Flags on the east end and she's, she's concerned about potential damage to the plantings there. The master gardeners have given $300 or $400 in grants to her and more to others to maintain these.
Hundreds of hours, I'm sure.
And she, she's just concerned about a dance and music event damaging those, that resource and at a minimum, would like to have some, if it's approved, have some way of ensuring that any damages is paid for. The biggest problem however is that once it's damaged, you know, it's not, it'll be another year before you get it back into shape that it's in. So money isn't really the issue for her, although that is a concern. And then she expressed concern about the loss of parking for, for 5:00 o'clock mass. I don't know, early before 5:00 o'clock mass, people start arriving, looking for parking.
They would still be able to come in off of Jefferson into the desert, I would think, would they not?
Well, I spoke with Bobby Schmidt today and he was not fully aware of what was going on. And there are some concerns because people do get there at 4:30 and they do park around the flag area and they do park in front of church, then they do park along Jefferson.
The handicap spots.
The handicap spots are right there. So he, you know, he had some concern about the parking for the elderly and also that a lot of people show up at 4:30 and mass usually gets out at, you know, right before 6:00. So I guess he was also concerned. Why did you pick that area?
That's what I tried, that's what I did mention. Dina Kreitler is, this is her baby basically and because she runs the chamber office, she picked that spot because of being able to use the electric and things like that. Plus, we've already talked to a couple of the restaurants and I think her goal was to, I know Ciro's and the Sandbar are both on board, to donate proceeds back to Project Graduation. And again, I don't know all of the particulars. I think it's some, some portion of food and this will also give them opportunity for business with the alcohol and so forth like that. I know she's also talked with the chief about this and things like that, so I apologize, I don't have all of the answers, but I definitely want to take notes and get your thoughts if this is not going to work and we need to do something different. I would absolutely love some input to bring back to her so we can get this together, yeah.
Is there time constraints about doing this? Cause we could table this for till the next meeting, but Dina could be here and Ms. Tole could be here.
Well, and that's kinda what we were thinking, we were kind of almost thinking we would just sneak out the back door, you know, and leave it for Dina next time, but that wasn't a good thought, so. We did want to go ahead and I know, Tom, you've been wanting to mention something, so please share that with us.
How does Project Graduation make any money off this event? Do you cordon off the area and charge admission?
Yes.
Into it like a blocked off area on the street itself?
How many, how many, you can block off the area?
I think she was talking like barricades of some sort, I think is what she was.
And then I know there will be different volunteers that will be along the perimeter for people that would come in. That's what I'm understanding. Again, I don't have.
My concerns, I have a list of concerns.
Okay, bring them on, Tom.
First is how it would affect parking for the entire downtown area. Not only the area that's closed off, but all the people that would attend would have to park somewhere, which would further pressure parking for the other businesses in that area. That's a big concern. Parking's kind of a double edged sword there. And the other with the master gardeners.
That one concerns me more than the parking.
I didn't get a letter until just now, but I got it firsthand and boy did I get.
I bet you did, cause I'm looking at this going, I bet I know.
Well, there are multiple locations in the area you're talking about that different master gardeners have adopted and that they spend countless hours of their time, hundreds and hundreds of dollars of their own money, hundreds and hundreds of dollars of grant money to develop these gardens over time. It's not just that they get trampled.
Well, that's what I mentioned. I mean, it's more the time and the heart put into it than it is the money. I understand that.
If you use the master gardeners, whoever Project Graduation is, if it's an organization or just some parents, are gonna have to give some guarantees to the master gardeners that no damage will be done and if damage is done, they'll get reparations for the damages. And then you're gonna have, you know, he said, she said, I think you gotta, I think you need to find a different spot. I think it's a.
And that's fine, we would love your input.
My other concern, people can't take alcohol out of Sandbar and walk down the street or the brick or the anvil or Ciro's, is that correct, Chief?
That, that is correct. In the instance of Jura Fett, if they cordon off areas and allow it in that area and there's somebody maintaining that and making sure that it doesn't leave, which I think this would probably fit into if the board approved that. Not to sway either way, just to throw out some information, talking to Dina initially about this, she had access to some of the like construction, orange mesh fencing that she was hoping to use.
Am I missing something here? Am I missing something here? This Project Graduation is for kids. Why are we talking about alcohol?
Well.
Well, the Project Graduation funds.
I asked the same question.
It's a fundraiser for the kids, but most of the fundraisers are coming out of the adults' pockets. We have a poker run, we have a golf tournament, we have a number of different things for it and it's the, it's the 2015 class, which by the way, is also the 100th graduating class of St. Genevieve. Don't know if you knew that or not, but there's so.
You're gonna make money off the parents, not the kids in this.
Yeah, I mean, this is more, more of the community, adults are who are basically gonna be putting out on this. I mean, the kids are gonna work the car wash, there's a number of things that they are gonna do, they're gonna sell Krispy Kreme donuts, those kind of things, but there's a lot of things focused for the adults, which, which is.
You're saying this, this thing down the Island of Flags is for adults or for the children? Well, this ain't gonna work out.
The, the event itself, my, my understanding, in the last few years, they've had fundraisers at, at the Oris and at the KC Hall that were geared towards the parents, a later evening, almost bar type feel that, that the business was willing to donate the proceeds for that, for that cause. I certainly share in some of the concerns of, of the board and, and would, would certainly express a concern if this was an occasion where they were wanting to mingle with, with kids and adults and alcohol and, you know, it, it, it sounds like, like there's some issues that, that may have already been addressed by Dina and she's not here to explain. I think tabling it probably would be the best effort, but as far as the master gardeners, my understanding was she had already started to attempt to, to, to get some barricade type material to keep people away from those areas and not be trampled.
I'd like to see the flower beds get trampled and then the people who tend those, who volunteer, who went to classes to become master gardeners and volunteered their time, spent their personal money, volunteered their time to get grants to pay for that, their garden is trampled, I mean, that's.
It's disrespectful and I think that's.
That's not shooting somebody's horse.
Yeah.
You know, you just can't do that.
Do you know if she's checked in any other places? Like I know they had something behind the old Bank of St. Genevieve one time in the big parking lot back there or even the Lions Club Park or behind the old Citizens Electric building, I mean, it's funny.
I guess in an effort to save everybody's time, I don't think anybody here has all of the answers that, that probably need to be addressed and it would probably save everybody's time.
Why don't we table for this one?
Daddy, something you talked about Dennis, there could be possibly two weddings or so that day.
Well, I guess something too he was concerned about, but the thing is, I mean.
Okay, we obviously.
The key person you could hold.
That doesn't mean the bachelor or.
I'm sorry?
Could be several weddings that day.
And Dina may have, I don't know, like, okay, yeah, I don't, I apologize, I don't know.
I'll check on that date, Mayor. I'll check on that date for weddings.
Well, let's just, let's just table it till the next meeting and.
Think of it.
And if anyone could have any suggestions for additional spots.
We'll move to table.
One second.
We'll do that and, you know, certainly some things come out tonight.
And I'll check on the wedding, if that possible day.
Okay. Okay, so we'll table it. All in favor of tabling it?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, we have, next, we have an approval of a liquor license request from Janine Catner doing business as 181 Pub and Grill LLC, 181 Washington Street for the sale of all intoxicating liquor, including Sunday sales.
Move through.
I have a question. Is what you're gonna do with that building, is there a special use permit in process for that or necessary? I got something, you know, from Brenda that, that I think mentioned that facility.
If she sells food, I think it's gonna require a special.
The other way around.
Oh, she doesn't sell food, it requires a special use permit.
Okay. So are we getting the cart before the horse or with the liquor license?
No, if she doesn't sell food.
Okay, I gotcha.
Then we're gonna require a liquor license, but since she is going to sell food, it, it meets requirements for the zoning.
And this is a longer pro, isn't getting the state license a longer process?
If she can't fly for a state license, we got the locals.
Yeah, you gotta get the city's license first, so.
Does she need a special use permit since that hasn't been in operation for years?
No, the, the way the zoning is there, if she is selling food, it works in that zoning. If she is not selling food and it is just a bar, so to say, it does not fit in that zoning, so then it would require a special use permit, but the fact that she is selling food does fit within the zoning regulations for that area, so.
Is that the old Eagles building?
Yes.
181?
You made the motion, do I have a second? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Approval of a certificate of appropriateness from Larry and Donna Marler to demolish a mobile home located at 13 Jefferson Street.
Sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? An approval of a cert, a certificate of appropriateness from MRV Bank to dismo, to demolish the commercial structure located at 875 St. Genevieve Drive, known as the old Palomino Lab.
Motion to approve.
Did you guys, you guys happen to read what, I, I just kinda got a kick out of this. Uh, Larry, Donna Marler, where they were going to tear down the old.
Popular local watering hole that ran its.
Ran, yeah.
Palomino.
Yeah. I kinda got a kick. Yeah, so what happened? It said, it was a popular local watering hole that ran its course.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Anything else for the board to do?
Yeah, I have, I'm gonna pass these out, just, again, this is just for information, I should've done this in my report, but there's a, Felix Meyer asked us to look at the possibility of setting up a Facebook page for City Hall. We have Facebook pages for, for tourism and this was for emergency management information, so we could put out notices and that kind of thing. And since we're going to the average Carla, who you all know and who is very talented, said, you know, if I'm gonna set a Facebook page, why don't I do it for more than just emergency notices? So we can put city agendas on there, we can put meeting notices and we can put.
I think that'd be a good idea, I'm surprised we don't have.
So here it is. It's a printout of the, just the first iteration of the Facebook page and you, and she'll be adding to it as we, as we go along.
That doesn't count as any kind of public notice on stuff like that, does it?
Nope. But one of the issues that was brought to my attention earlier here was that we need to do whatever we can to improve communication with the citizens and this is a good.
Yeah, I think it is too. I think it is too. It's a good idea.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Now, close session for version.
Okay, we do want to have a close session, discuss personnel matter.
Motion to adjourn.
Not to adjourn, it's going to be a close session.
Motion to move on to a close session.
Alderwoman Codwell?
Yes.
Alderman Couch?
Yes.
Alderman John Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Donnie Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Hook?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Ross?
Yes.